Good evening, everybody. I would like to call to order the November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four regular city council meeting. Tonight, I am joined by Mayor Pro Tem Kraut and council members Albrecht, Bazagian, and Shapiro, as well as our city staff. If you would like to provide public comment during our meeting, please complete a speaker card and give it to our city clerk. The cards are in the back, and our city clerk is right here. Tonight, I am joined by Girl Scout Troop Eighteen Sixty-Six, who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Audience attention. Please stand for the presentation of the colors. Color guard, attention. Color guard, advance. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Color guard, post the colors. Color guard, salute the colors. Color guard, dismissed.
If the council can get in tight there. Thank you so much to Troop Eighteen Sixty-Six. And what's great is so many of these girls were council members for the day when they came for a city hall tour, so it is so nice to see them back. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Ed and Peter. We met in closed session. Does our city attorney have anything to report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. We did meet in closed session on one matter of potential litigation, as well as the existing litigation on the Mountain Resort Restoration Trust versus City of Calabasas. We discussed the two potential cases and the existing litigation, but no reportable action was taken on either.
Thank you so much. Our first item tonight is a presentation on the America in Bloom Awards, and our Public Works Director, Curtis Castle, will present the item.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and council members. Tonight, we have a presentation that's going to recap the city's effort in the America in Bloom contest that we competed in this year. It's a big effort, and it requires a big lift from city staff, from city council, and from our community. And everybody came up with a big lift, and we have some really great news to report on. And I'm going to turn it over to Deputy Public Works Director Tatiana Holden and Management Analyst Melanie Stapanian.
To present the two thousand and twenty-four America in Bloom program and Calabasas' participation and achievements. Calabasas has been participating in America in Bloom program since two thousand and thirteen, earning awards and special recognition each year. America in Bloom evaluates community based on seven criterias, which we'll talk about later. And the America in Bloom ranges each community on the stars, which is from one to ten, from zero percent to one hundred percent participation. And we've been receiving different blooms and star awards throughout this more than ten years of participation of the City of Calabasas. The American Bloom two thousand and twenty-four ranged cities on several different criterias, from community vitality to overall impression, and you have them all on the screen. And this year, we are so proud to receive the nine-star rating, which means that our City of Calabasas, our community, has been rated to eighty to ninety percent participation of community participation and efforts to make Calabasas what it is on all the seven criterias. We also received an award on the America in Bloom overall impression for Calabasas in our category of the population from twenty-two to twenty-nine thousand population category. And over three hundred and sixty communities from forty-three states participated in this program, so this is very special to the City of Calabasas, and we were very proud to be recognized and received, recognized for this and received this award. And I would like to turn it to my colleague Melanie Stapanian to continue on the presentation.
Thank you very much, Tatiana. So in addition to the previously mentioned award, we also received an award for the Best Volunteer Recognition Program, pictured on the PowerPoint and here in Tatiana's hand as well. The volunteer recognition shows appreciation, keeps community members connected, and gives a sense of belonging and contribution. Our volunteer recognition program highlights the city's gratitude for community volunteers' dedication and service. City staff takes pride in helping seniors bloom where they're planted. Congratulations to our community services team and our wonderful volunteers. Together, we make success bloom. So at this time, we'd like to call Ms. Carol Davis up to the dais for just a moment. So at the two thousand and twenty-four AIB Symposium and Award Celebration, Ms. Carol Davis was acknowledged for her nomination for the two thousand and twenty-four Dwight Lund Community Champion Award. The annual Community Champion Award is presented by AIB to recognize individuals who have made exceptional contributions to enhancing and beautifying their communities. This recognition is a testament to your hard work, dedication, and exceptional contributions to the City of Calabasas. Thank you, Ms. Carol Davis, for your unparalleled commitment and passion. Congratulations on your nomination. So this year, we received a total of four awards: the overall impression, the population category for twenty-two thousand to twenty-nine thousand, the Best Volunteer Recognition Award, and Ms. Carol Davis's nomination. Thank you so much, council members.
Thank you so much for all of staff's hard work, and congratulations, Carol. Very exciting.
We'd like to have Ms. Carol Davis take a photo with her nomination and the Honorable City Council, please.
My turn, one, two, three. Are there any council members who would like to make any comments? Peter?
Carol, thank you so much for doing all that you do for our city. It's amazing not only that we've been able to recognize you here, but that a national organization like America in Bloom has been able to recognize you as well, because that just makes us look good, and we appreciate that. We appreciate the way that you've led our senior center. And to our Public Works Department, congratulations once again. This is a beautiful city. I'm really proud of how we adapted after the drought and changed up our landscaping. And isn't it amazing that we were able to do that and still keep winning these awards for having such a beautiful city? So my congratulations to all of you.
James?
Yes, congratulations, Carol, and to the staff. I know how much work is put year-round into this competition, and I'll tell you, it's been my honor to participate in part of the ceremonies as well, in the historical part. So I just hope that we continue to do this every year, and I know that the judges really do appreciate our city and our category. We get comments all the time about how our city stands out in its category, and we could probably even compete with cities much larger than us. But I hope, Kenden, that's something we continue to do throughout the near future.
David?
I just want to say big congratulations to staff for all their hard work and effort, because I know when we first started doing this, it was kind of like, what is this? Nobody knew what it was, and we've gotten better and better at it each year and work harder, and that's in large part to great community volunteers such as Carol. So congratulations, Carol, and all those who participated in this great, 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 successful trip you had to collect awards and honor the city. Hope we keep doing it as well. I know we took a little break, so this is fantastic, and congratulations.
Ed?
Carol, it doesn't surprise me that you're always in the middle of something, time and time again. And when we first met, I knew I met somebody special way back when, and it's just getting bigger and bigger. And now, as Peter had said, it's on a national scale, and it's so true. Your approach to everything is unique and different, and you recruit people, and you bring them along, and you've really got a great team around you. And we've got a great team in the city, the Public Works and all the effort that we've made. It makes our city so unique and so different than anybody else. It's a pleasure to know that we live here. So thank you, and thank you, and many more to come.
And I just want to echo what everyone said. Thank you to all of our staff. I know it's an all-hands-on-deck effort to entertain and put together this program for the judges, and also what James said. I love talking to the judges when they come out here, because they really marvel at the natural beauty of Calabasas and everything that we do here, all of our programs and the way the community comes together. So it's great, and Carol's such a perfect nominee for this award, so thank you for all that you do, and I'm glad that America in Bloom was able to see what we see. So congratulations. And I have one speaker card on this item. If there's anyone else who would like to speak, please fill out a card, and the card that I have is for Charlotte Meyer.
I couldn't pass up this opportunity to say some things about my pal Carol Davis. Carol Davis is someone we are lucky to know. She is one hell of a dynamo. She's an inspiring leader with vision and finesse. She works hard, and that explains it all. That's why she's our savvy senior representative to City Hall. Her volunteerism is renowned, and even the national organization, America in Bloom, thinks she's extraordinary and profound. We are so proud of Carol, who is their two thousand and twenty-four Volunteer of the Year. That makes her the queen bee, a Calabasas VIP. Carol has inspired many to speak up and fight for any issue we know is right. Her humor keeps everything light. She conceived and has grown Karen Calabasas, a club that has engaged hundreds of seniors in worthwhile activities, helping to make the world a better place. Carol is always on active duty, embracing every opportunity to help. About a decade ago, she announced, "Let's build a senior center to a skeptical town." And now, it is one of our diamonds in the city's crown. Now, parking is on her mind. Considering the loss of one hundred parking spaces coupled with those in the Tesla charging station that keeps all of us at night, the city's future is not so bright. Some people count sheep to fall asleep. Carol lulls herself to sleep by counting parking spaces. Lately, she has had a hard time falling asleep because there aren't too many parking spaces to count. Please explore all the options to ensure a good parking plan, and Carol will have more parking spaces to count.
Thank you, Charlotte, and you get the award for combining two agenda items in one. Oh, Carol, yes.
That was funny. She's trying to be funnier than I am. Well, thank you. When I heard that I earned honorable mention for America in Bloom, I was shocked. I've been known to be a thorn in some people's sides. I've been known to be a blooming idiot, but I've never, other than that, had the title of this award connected to me. It was a mystery, and that's what somebody else said tonight. Besides, whomever wrote the submission did so undercover. They have since been outed, and I see some of their faces here tonight. After the fact, when reading the fine print, I realized that the special Dwight Lund Community Award recognizes the positive impact that volunteerism and community engagement has and how it affects the quality of life in a city. The Karen Calabasas Club, the Calabasas Senior Center, have certainly done that, and I'm proud to be a strong proponent of both. Not a week goes by that someone doesn't stop and tell me how their quality of life has been positively impacted by our programs and efforts. To the seniors, it makes Calabasas the happiest place on earth, and it has certainly helped us to bloom where we are planted. I realize now that it is a good extension of the definition of blooming in a global definition, and in a meaningful sense, and I embrace the honor that I initially did not understand. So thank you, Mr. Dwight Lund. Thank you, Curtis. Thank you, Tatiana. Thank you, Heather. Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, Laura and Richard and Jennifer for touring the judges around the city, and thank you fellow seniors who worked long into the evening hours to write the submission and drove here when it was even dark. Thank you, Kenden, and thank you, city council persons, for supporting the savvy seniors and the Karen Calabasas Club, both financially and emotionally. Thank you, too, to anyone I forgot to mention. I plead old age. Or to those who helped and due to the clandestine nature of the effort. Thank you, too, to my husband of fifty-nine years, Bill Davis, who got a job at Hughes Aircraft so many eons ago. This former New Yorker is happy to be blooming in the fertile soil of the award-winning city of Calabasas, which is really a lovely place to be planted.
Thanks, Carol. Next up is our Sheriff's Crime Report with Deputy Di Matteo.
Hey, good evening. I am Deputy Di Matteo of the Lost Hills Sheriff's Station, and I'm going to present the September two thousand and twenty-four crime report. Let's hop right into it. There were eight residential burglaries in September. Three of those occurred on the same day at a senior living home on Malibu Hills Road. There was one commercial burglary, four vehicle burglaries, three grand thefts, three petty thefts, four stolen cars. There was one rape. This incident involved two adult coworkers who were heavily intoxicated, and consent was not provided. This case is being handled by the Sheriff's Special Victims Bureau. We did have two arsons. One of these occurred on Calabasas Road, where witnesses observed a male adult transient light trash on fire near the Pedder's Fork Restaurant. The suspect ran into nearby Woodland Hills and out of view. No damage was reported. The other incident took place near Lost Virginus and Thousand Oaks Boulevard. Suspect's unknown lit trash on fire and threw it into a storm drain. No damage was reported then. That's about it for the crime report. Any comments, questions, or concerns?
Are there any questions, Ed, or comments?
Thank you for the report. Thank you for every report you give us when you come here. Really appreciated. And in looking at this month for month and trying to make some kind of ratio of trend lines, they're thin, but there is movement, and it does look like we're making progress. It's reflected in that. But there's something I want to compliment you on and brings everybody's attention, and that is, as I'm looking through this during the week, something popped out to me, and that's really the average response time. And I think all of us have been in that spot once in a while, and you can count every second until you can get help. It feels like an eternity. But the average response time on emergent calls is six point one minutes. That's really remarkable. And across the board, the priority calls are thirteen minutes, routine calls are thirty-nine minutes. So we're there when we need them. So thank you very, very much. And, you know, I have to compare it to the county average. We're best across the board, best in show as they talk in horse language. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
David?
I also want to thank you and everyone at the station for everything you do for our community. Quick question, for the two lighting-on-fire attempts and throwing of some material in different locations, were those transients ever located or caught at this point?
The first one wasn't. Second one, we don't have any suspect description.
Okay. All right. And then, also, since we are approaching holidays pretty soon, we're coming up to that time of year, just like in the summer when things are beautiful, any special recommendations for the public, out shopping, outgoing about in town, eating, celebrating holiday parties? What we can do to keep ourselves and our property safe?
Yeah, there's a lot of things you can do. But if you notice on the report, there's four vehicle burglaries, one commercial burglary, eight residential burglaries. Expect those numbers to go up during the holiday season. Can't emphasize enough that theft is a big contributor to our crime report monthly. For the holiday season, the thieves are out there. If you're shopping, watch out for scams, watch out for people distracting you so they can steal your wallet out of your shopping cart. Watch out for scammers outside of restaurants saying they need gas when they don't. If you want to donate, donate to a charity or a church. Donate to somebody on the side of the street. If you get packages, bring those in. Don't leave them out on your porch. And if you're leaving for the night, please ensure that you have cameras in good working order, you have sufficient lighting in your home, and you have good window covering. So try not to make yourself a target for some type of theft.
Great. And you had told me, so I'll add to it, you'd said, obviously, lock all cars, lock your cars, don't leave packages or purses or any briefcases sitting out in the car. Lock your windows, lock your doors. A lot of locks involved there.
Yeah, so crimes of opportunity are a big thing. We've had individuals visiting from different states become victims of theft in the commons area and stuff like that. So if you have property, don't leave it out. If you have things in your vehicle, don't leave it in plain view, put it in the trunk or take it home, and then resume shopping.
Thank you very much, and be safe and well. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter?
I have no questions, but I will say thank you for everything that you've been doing here in the last month or so, since we've received your last report, and also a special thank you for showing up on October seventh when our community gathered. It was wonderful to have your presence, and all of your colleagues there made us feel safe to gather, and thank you for that.
Thank you.
James?
I know. Thank you for the report.
Thank you.
And thank you for everything that you do every day for us.
Thank you.
I'm going to turn to council announcements. Peter?
We just asked that you bring an unwrapped toy. Any questions? You can find more information on our website at cityofcalabasas.com.
James?
I don't have any. Thank you.
David?
I have a bunch. I want to first thank our staff, including city manager, assistant city manager, deputy, every member of staff, and our city council for a wonderful Veterans Day celebration we had last week. It was respectful, it was nice, and it was tremendously appreciated by all those who attended. Also, I had the pleasure of attending Viewpoints Art of the Poppy Veterans Day Celebration, first time they've done that with the mayor. Mayor Weintraub spoke on behalf of the city and council member Albrecht, and that was really nice as well. And I want to thank staff again and the Mayor's Youth Council, most importantly, for the Mayor's Youth Council Flea Mart, which was held last week, and we had a council member and a city clerk who were very active there as well, so it was very nice. Today, Ed, Albrecht, and I attended on behalf of the city and presented a plaque to outgoing twenty-four-year board member for the Lost Virginus Municipal Water District, Charlie Caspary, who has been a fixture here for all types of events, and Ed spoke tremendously on behalf of the city. Let's see, we had elections since we last met, so I do want to talk about, bless you, a couple things. Prop thirty-six, we all supported as a council passed. We have a new DA, Nathan Hockman, for LA County. We have a school board member, new school board member from Calabasas, Alan Lazar, and Leslie Kraut ran an excellent campaign, and she was very close, but Linda, incumbent Linda, won. And last but not least, Prop G passed as well. And with all those happy things today is World Kindness Day. I bet nobody knew that, but we can all use a little more kindness everywhere. Last but not least is Clue at Calabasas High School. If you haven't seen a play, it just played last year at the Amundsen, this year actually, and it's Thursday, Friday, and Saturday at the Performing Arts Education Center. It's a comedy, it's fun, and they do a tremendous job. And since we won't see you for a while, Happy Thanksgiving to everybody and everybody at home.
Ed?
David, that was amazing. That leaves one thing, actually two. I wanted to thank council for the recognition on Veterans Day. It went so quick, and it lasted forever. And sharing that day with other veterans and seeing how Veterans Day has become recognized even more, and particularly on that day, we had a lot of children. And that's pretty unique, to develop a patriotic DNA at that young age. So thank you very, very much. I never thought, when I took the oath, I'd be recognized years later, but I appreciate it very much. But I appreciate it very much. I'd like to mention one thing, and this caught my eye also. It's on our city homepage on the web. Microtransit survey. We talked about this at council a couple of times, and we're looking for the survey answers on the public transit on-demand ride-sharing service. So if you're using it, if you've got comments, if you recognize it and submit your answers, it would be helpful for us to make decisions. That's it. Thank you very much.
And all the announcements have been taken. I just want to thank our city staff again for all the work that they did for putting on the city's Veterans Day event. It really meant a lot to the community. And we received such a nice email from Bill, who's in the audience. So it's wonderful to be able to honor our veterans every year. And I look forward to this program being a longstanding tradition in Calabasas. So thank you. Thank you to everyone who served. And without any more council announcements, we will move on to oral communication, public comment. And I have two cards. If anyone else would like to fill out a card, please do so. The first comment is Mark Levinson.
Mayor, council, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. Again, I really enjoyed, and I think it's important to mention how important it is for the younger people and the young people we had from the high school to participate in Veterans Day, the band, the color guard, and the woman who sang the National Anthem. I think those are very important in keeping everyone involved in honoring the people who have served us in many different ways. Couple of quick announcements for the chamber. The 21st, we have the Women's Group. Logic is presenting on how to invest for women, how to plan for your future. Should be a very, very good presentation. I invite all women to appear. December 5th, we have at the Country Club, a Holiday Mixer starting at 6:00, ending at 7:30. December 10th is the Educational Forum. And January 25th is our installation and gala casino night. And we hope all of you attend as always. And again, thank you. And Peter, I assume you'll be swearing in the new board. So thank you for that. And it's now my pleasure to introduce Alex Davidson from Barrister Suites, who is a member of the chamber and has offices here in Calabasas.
Hi, thank you so much. We are at Barrister Executive Suites. We just opened in Calabasas right off of, excuse me, Lost Hills on Agora Road. We offer virtual offices, full-time office space, meeting rooms. We also have a really beautiful lounge that you can come and work in. We have screaming fast internet, so coffee, internet, just kind of a nice place to come and work if you need to kind of get out of the house. And so, yeah, we're right off at Lost Hills on Agora. And our website is barrister-suites.com. Thank you so much.
I had a question. You mentioned a virtual office.
Yeah.
Can you elaborate?
Yeah, so a virtual office can be anything from just like a mailing address. So you can use the address. You can publish it. If you're running a business and you don't want people coming to your house, they could come to say, yes, we'll receive your mail. We can forward your mail. And then it can go all the way up to using conference room hours. We can answer your phones. You can book meeting rooms. So it's kind of all of the benefits of having an office without actually having to have an office.
Fascinating. Thank you, and welcome to Calabasas.
Thank you so much.
Next speaker is Laura Weischer.
Good evening, everyone. You built it, and they came. Nine years ago, city council approved the building of the award-winning Calabasas Senior Center. The city's efforts helped the local senior community by providing lifelong learning, socialization, and activity. At the time the center was constructed, city personnel provided assurances that the facilities available for parking would always remain. As a result, the lot used for parking was not purchased. Unfortunately, now, over 100 apartment units will be built on this land, basically removing all available parking for the senior center, for the library, and for city offices. Last year, this issue was addressed by a group of seniors, city personnel, and the developer, Cruzon Corporation. As an accommodation was reached in which the Cruzon Corporation would build an additional 19 parking spaces in its development, and the city would build approximately 21 parking spaces just east of the senior center. Currently, the city is reexamining this accommodation due to the cost and competing priorities for the funds. Council members failed their responsibility to secure permanent parking when the city facilities and senior center were built. Council members are potentially going to fail again if they do not honor this accommodation. And that's very hard for me to say. Alternatives such as golf carts and managing parkinging are really not what is needed now. What we need are parking spaces, period. These options will not address the basic problem of insufficient parking. And these substandard remedies would leave seniors, children using the library, and the general public waiting in the elements with days of over 100-degree heat, severe wind, or rain. Moreover, instead of incurring, I'm sorry, a fixed cost, the city would be incurring costs that would be rising each year in perpetuity. You built, and they came. The senior center is a tremendous facility, as evidenced by all of us, and how we enjoy it and what we contribute to the city. It is time for the city to fulfill their responsibility and build the necessary parking spaces. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Laura. Now moving on to consent items. Does anyone wish to pull an item?
If I could, just to hear some comments from staff on it, that's all.
Which number?
Number eight and number 12, please.
Number eight and number 12. Anybody else? Okay, we will move to, well, item number eight is receipt of complete street safety assessment.
And I appreciate it. I read it. I thought maybe just a minute or so, if Curtis could explain or go over briefly for the public. That would be all. Same with eight, 12.
Sure. So before I turn it over, Treya, who was really involved in this, this is a program that the city had to apply for, much like a grant, except the award wasn't monetary, but we did receive complimentary services. And those were essentially limited to what could be reviewed in one day of field observations with some consultant, traffic engineers, and transportation planners. And so we prioritized different intersections around the city that we thought would fit into this program. And we basically got a free report on that with recommendations of potential upgrades that we can incorporate into future grant opportunities or future projects. Treya, do you have anything to add?
Unless council has specific questions, that's a really good recap of what happened.
That's fine. Thank you very much. I read the report. I just thought you might want to add something. Thank you. Appreciate it.
And number 12 is adoption of Resolution Number 2024-1932, updating the citywide fee schedule to establish fees for the Calabasas Community Center. And Resolution Number 2024-1936, allocating funds for the community center fees and hourly wages for fitness instructors.
And I'm, we are all supportive of this. I know previously we've discussed it, but wanted to hear if you wanted to add anything for the public who may not have read this report.
Thank you, council member. Yes, we just wanted to report that we went through the fees. We heard what council said with the nonprofit. We increased our commercial rates, so the nonprofit would be less expensive. And then to entice the package rates. So we are excited to add that fitness instructor and class, fitness access pass, not class pass, to the membership. And our staff is working on doing that, promoting it. And we hope to launch that fairly soon.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions for consent? If not, are there any members of the public wishing to speak on any items on the consent calendar? I don't have any cards. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second?
David and Peter. All those in favor?
Aye.
The consent calendar items are approved. Now we will move on to public hearing. Continue consideration of ordinance Number 2024-410, amending Section 17.30, signs of the Calabasas Municipal Code to permit digital kiosks in shopping centers. Oh, to remove, sorry, to move that to December 4th, 2024. May I have a motion to continue the hearing to December 4th, 2024?
So moved.
Okay, David and Ed, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now moving on to new business. Adoption of Resolution Number 2024-1934, establishing safety corridors. Curtis Castle and Treya will be joining us.
Good evening again. We're just going to park up here for the rest of the night, cover some public work stuff. So this first item, or not the first item, the first of our items tonight, item 17, that's before you, is something that the city, that a lot of, every city in California looks at doing. And it's something that we took very seriously. And we took a lot of analysis to come up with the recommendations that you're going to hear about. And establishing safety corridors. Essentially, will give the city greater flexibility down the line in setting speed limits. And so I'm joined by Treya Bezdekny and our traffic engineering consultant, Tom Miracle. And Tom is going to take it from here.
Thank you, Curtis. Mayor, Mayor Protam, and members of the council. Speed limits is something that I think all communities are concerned about in terms of traffic safety. And there's been a lot of change to state law in the last three to four years. One of those that we're going to recommend taking action on tonight is establishing safety corridors for traffic safety. And that does, when we come back early next year with some speed limit recommendations, it does give us a little bit of flexibility for how speed limits are traditionally set. The last time there was a comprehensive speed survey of the city, it was back in 2015. Change in state law in 2022, or in 2021, allowed us to basically extend those while some of those new laws came into effect. So we did that back in 2022. And that's at the same time that it allowed for these considerations of setting speed limits, using safety corridors, and this other term called land use generators, where you can look at changes to speed limit based upon land uses that generate pedestrian and bicycle traffic. The recent general plan update did give us a chance to change some of our street classifications, which also plays into this analysis. In general, setting speed limits has been established near what's called the 85th percentile speed. And that's the speed at which 85% of the people travel at or below. And it may be reduced by five miles an hour when you consider things such as traffic collision history. The new law allows us to further reduce that by five miles an hour in designated safety corridors or in these areas of high levels of bicycle and pedestrian generation. So what we're here to talk about tonight is establishing these safety corridors. What state law says is a safety corridor is a roadway segment within the overall network where the highest number of serious injury and fatality crashes occur. It needs to represent a prioritized set of the overall network and cannot exceed 1/5 of the network. And it should be segments where a minimum of 25% of these fatal and serious injury crashes occur. So this kind of sets the parameters for our analysis. One of the things that was, that we really had to look at first was the total collisions. And typically in traffic engineering, we only look back two or three years. Fortunately, the city doesn't have a large history of traffic collisions. So in order to really dig down to where our safety issues might be, I looked at the entire database that was available back to 2012 so that we could really look at over time where has our safety issues been. We had 88% occurring along Mohawk and Old Topanga, Lost Virginus, Agora, Calabasas, and Parkway, Calabasas. So this kind of narrows that roadway down. And then we further looked at that and said, where are the speed-related collisions? Because again, this pertains to laws related to setting speed limits. So we want to focus on what speed-related collisions are. And we looked at the highest concentration, further narrowed that down to all of Mohawk and Highway, Lost Virginus from Thousand Oaks Boulevard to Lost Hills, and Parkway Calabasas from Calabasas Road to Paseo Primario. And that represents 26, 28.6% of the fatal and serious injury and 10.8% of the overall network falling within those state-required parameters. And then lastly, we looked at, how do you prioritize those corridors? That is required by law is for us to prioritize them based upon severity, the mode of travel of the collisions, and the proximity to schools. And on the table shown here, we ended up with a priority of Mohawk and Highway based upon the number of collisions and the number of schools. Lost Virginus Road based upon the number of fatal and vehicular collisions. And then Parkway Calabasas came in third. This map represents the three corridors of, from left to right, Lost Virginus, Parkway Calabasas, and Mohawk and Highway. So the next steps, if council approves this recommendation, is that we're going to conduct new speed studies in the spring, prepare the engineering and traffic surveys that are required by law that have recommendations for new speed limits, and then take that to the TTC and bring them to city council for final approval. We expect that to happen in late spring of next year. So with that, we have a Resolution Number 2024-1934 with a recommendation of designating the safety corridors in the priority order of Mohawk and Highway, Lost Virginus Road, and Parkway Calabasas. With that, I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Tom, for the report. Are there any council comments? James?
Yes, I have a couple. On two of the three streets that are identified, they meander out of the city. At no, and there's not really a demarcation. Like, it's not really, the average member of the public probably doesn't realize they're going out of the city. So how are we integrating this program if we want it to be successful with the other areas? And in both cases, they're unincorporated areas. I mean, it seems like it's the same street. It's the same concerns, the same traffic patterns, people coming in and out. Are we working with other jurisdictions? Or are we only concentrating on those stretches that are ours? How is that working?
Thank you, council member. That's a great question. So we only have authority over the streets that are within our boundary. But we do, it is sort of required practice to work with adjacent jurisdictions because you don't want to go. If we establish one of the streets at 35 and they've established it at 50, there's a disconnect. So we do need to work with, in this case, the county for both Lost Virginus and Mohawk and Highway on if and what they're going to do. I may disagree with what their recommendations are, and we may not end up with something that is compatible necessarily. But we will work with them. We'll reach out to them. I know people at the county that we'll be talking to. And it's standard practice.
Having been a county employee, it's probably a worthless venture because I don't think they care. But don't think they care. But, you know, one of the things that I'm thinking about is, like, and I don't know, maybe the city attorney knows, I hate to put you on the spot, because I don't know off the top of my head. When you're changing around speed limits, is there a permissible limit you can't go beyond? Like, let's say, like, Moreau Road is a great example. It just ends in an odd place with the city limit. Obviously, I don't think we could raise ours or lower ours too far beyond, you know, the line, because that wouldn't give people notice to slow down or speed up or whatever. So what is that number? What variation can you have when you cross a city limit?
There are typically traffic engineers that do the study, and I don't know if it's necessarily enumerated in any of the streets and highway codes, but I do know that based on the arterial width, there are certain standards that are required for how fast or slow the traffic speed limit should be based on a lot of different factors, but I don't think it's necessarily codified in state law.
But there seems, there would seem to be a due process argument if you're, if you say, if there's a, like, a 10 or a 15-mile variation, and you, we want to, we want to enforce traffic, and we start ticketing people, where they come into the city and all of a sudden the speed limit's 10 or 15 miles less. I mean, what, what, tell me about what your plans are for that. Let's just say, let's just assume, and again, having my experience with the county, they do nothing, and they're non-responsive. So what, if we want to change things, what are we, what are we gonna do when we have that very kind of variation?
So, let's take Moreau Road, I guess, is a good example, because let's say we do our studies, and we determine that the most appropriate speed is 35 miles per hour, say, and the county has decided that their section is 50. There's a couple of things we can do. We are allowed by law for the city to establish that 35 all the way up to the line. But what we would do as traffic engineers is we would say, okay, we have a duty to use warning signs to say 50 mile an hour zone ahead, and vice, you know, and on the other side, work with the county to post a sign that says 35 mile an hour zone, reduce speed, kind of signing in advance of our city limit. Those are the types of things that we would do. The county mayor may not let us do that, in which case, we mount it right at our city line, and then we just don't enforce it until the speed limit line is 200 feet beyond that.
If I could also just jump in. So the baseline for all of this is the 85th percentile speed, which is gonna be similar for the whole corridor, regardless of the jurisdictional line. So with the safety corridors, we have a, we have this capacity to essentially lower it by an additional five miles per hour. So I think the most, and Tom can jump in if I'm wrong, about the most, the largest difference we'd see between the two speed limits would be 10 miles per hour, but that would probably be unlikely. It would probably be more in the five mile per hour range, just because that 85th percentile is gonna be, it's gonna be the same through that corridor.
It does depend. If the county has not established a speed limit based upon a survey, it's gonna be 55 automatically. So we could end up where the 85th is 50, but they have decided to not do their survey, it's 55 by law, and we're establishing it at 40, we've got that 15 mile an hour difference. So it's, it's, every corridor is gonna be processed, and when we bring the speed limit information back, we can address this, this issue.
Okay, thank you.
Peter?
Yeah, thank you for your report, and thank you, Councilmember Bezagian, for starting the discussion here. I had similar thoughts. I imagine, as I'm driving to Mammoth, and we pass through the town of Independence, if you've ever taken that road, the speed limit goes from 70 to 65 to 55 to 45 to 35 to 25, and if you don't slow down to 25 at that sign, you're getting a ticket. I would love it if Calabasas's speed limit on Mulholland was five miles an hour lower than the county's, simply because it would create that notice to vehicle drivers that, when they're entering the city, they need to slow down. So I'm not opposed to that difference there. I think it's actually a good message, and maybe after we do something with the speed limit there, over time, the county is gonna catch on and later join us, but it'll set the standard ahead of time. So I know that our traffic engineers can solve that. One of the questions I had was regarding the 85th percentile. If we measure the 85th percentile coming out of the Harpin Corners of Mulholland, it's gonna be slower than it is on the straightaways. And how far can we carry that lower speed limit into the straightaways, or do we have to measure that every quarter mile, or how does that work?
Councilmember, that's, that's a great question, because it is, it's hard for, when we train new staff, it's hard to train them in what is appropriate. The state guidelines and the state laws don't specify, but they do say things like prevailing free-flow speed, that you need to do it in a section of the highway that is indicative of the entire roadway section that you are signing. So you typically want to do it in the straighter sections, and then potentially, you're gonna do curve warning signs at your curves. So you're doing a combination of curve warning and setting the speed limit appropriately for the sections that are straight. So we would never take a speed survey coming right out of a curve unless the entire street is curvilinear all the way. In this case, it's all curve. So in the case of Mulholland, we would be looking at taking it in an area where there is a straight section. Because there's a median, we actually, by law, we treat it as two different roadways, one speed limit on one direction, on one side of the median, one on the other, and they could be different. But it does have to be taken in an area that's sort of typical of the entire section.
Okay, thank you. Next question was, you had 28% fatal accidents occurred on the three streets, and that was within the 25% requirement set? I was lost on that. The initial slide said we had to be within, we could set the rule based on 25% of the fatal and serious injury. Oh, that was a minimum, not a maximum.
Yeah.
Gotcha, okay. I was reading that as a maximum. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
And then the last question I noticed was, you counted the number of schools on those roadways. When you counted Lost Hills Road, did you count a school there? Because although the school is not on Lost Hills Road, the pedestrian traffic coming across that street enters the bridge to the backside of Lost Hills Road, and I really think it should be treated as a school corridor.
Yes, Councilmember. Lost Hills Road, on my larger table, Lost Hills Road did have a school recognized, but the collision history along Lost Hills is much less than Lost Virginus.
As long as we recognize the school.
It didn't fall into that top three.
All right, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
David?
Thank you for this report, and your report, and I am fully supportive of this item and the ongoing study and coming back to us. The only question I'll ask, and it's probably premature, is, is the issue of enforcement. Once we go ahead and hopefully reduce some of these dangerous, potentially dangerous roads or conditions in the city, and reduce the speed limit, how are we gonna enforce, or what avenues might we look at to enforce the speed limits outside of what we're doing now?
Thank you, Councilmember. Well, outside of what we do now is probably a more difficult question for me to ask, or for me to answer. Right now, we are lucky to have a full-time motor officer dedicated to traffic enforcement. It has, in my opinion, the last six months that they've been here, it's been really helpful at the schools in particular. They've also gone out and done targeted enforcement along the Lost Virginus corridor, which has addressed a lot of concerns in there. And then, of course, they're, they're always on Mulholland and on Old Topanga. So I think they're doing a pretty good job now for the resources that we have. The question is kind of twofold. One is getting more resources for more enforcement, and second, are there alternatives to having a body that we have to pay for? And without going too far into that, automated speed enforcement is something that's being currently studied by the legislature and the Highway Patrol through a program that's, that allowed several cities, including City Malibu, to do some pilot programs. That may bring some automated speed enforcement in residential neighborhoods and school zones in the future. It probably would not affect any of these three corridors, in my opinion. But beyond that, it's really, it's a resource allocation issue.
Thank you.
Ed?
Thank you. Tom, great, great report of what works. I read this very, very thoroughly. I couldn't be happier. Just even the terminology of traffic engineering. Traffic is not static. You know, things change. Cars go faster, they've got different pickup, there's, the roadways are getting less safe more and more, but you did, it's targeted the most difficult areas that we're, have concerns over, some of which are where we, I live in greater Mulholland, but, you know, hopefully somehow, some way, we can combine and balance the enforcement issue and the automated enforcement in the future, because all of this is gonna be for naught if we can't control it. I do have one concern that was brought up, I think it was Mayor Protam brought this up, about signage with different speeds as you approach and leave. But one thing I'd be worried about, and that's having signs that feel like billboards as you're driving along. Be careful approaching so-and-so, or you're leaving a zone, or you're entering a zone. The beauty of the mountains and the beauty of Mulholland, you don't want to have too many signage, signs on there, but you also have to recognize to control the speed and the safety factor. So there's a lot of challenges involved, but the specifics that are addressed in here and how detail-oriented it is, I know you're gonna have great outcomes. And I'm totally supportive of it, and I'm sure the finished product will be great.
And I just want to add, my only concern is about enforcement. Mulholland Highway is, it's just out of control. If there's not deputies there, people just have no, I mean, not everyone, but the people speeding have no regard. I wish I could give out tickets on that street. I mean, it's unreal, especially on the weekends, just there's so, anything that we can do. But I think really educating the public about this and trying to get more enforcement there was, would be crucial to this, making this successful and safe. So thank you. Let's see, what action do we need to take? Let's see. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on this item? I don't have any cards, so I'm looking for a motion.
I'll move adoption of resolution 2024-1934, establishing safety corridors.
I'll second that.
Great. Thank you, Peter and David. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the motion passes. Thank you. Continuing with Public Works, item 18, consideration of authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute the grant agreement with the U.S. Department of Transportation for the Safe Streets and Roads for All SS4A Grant Program, and adoption of resolution number 2024-1938, allocating funds for the SS4A Grant Program. And Curtis and his team are still here, so I'll let you report on this item.
Thank you, Mayor.
Trea and Tom.
Thank you very much. So this is a really exciting item for us. Before we turn it over to Trea to get into the details, I just want to thank all the Public Works staff and Tom. This application took a lot of work. This is a federal grant, and it just, it was a lot of digging through all the resources we have, and actually going out in the field and looking at the needs in the city. And there was never a guarantee that we were gonna get this grant, but there was a lot of internal meetings and staff time devoted to this. So thank you to Trea, Tom, and Tatiana. They really led the effort on this. And the result is gonna be really great. It's gonna be a long effort. We have, I think, great, a really great funding amount, and it's gonna take us a couple, two to three years to get through all this. But at the end, we're gonna, we're gonna end up with some very clear direction on how we can improve our community. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Trea.
Thank you, Curtis. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mr. Protam, and council members. Like Curtis said, we are, we are very excited for this opportunity. It's not every day that we get this kind of an opportunity for a grant and to do the work that we're prepared to do for the next few years. So I just wanted to quick run you through a short agenda for how we're gonna go through this presentation. So I'll provide a little bit of background of how we got here, the grant information, what Calabasas was awarded, and then what's gonna happen after the award. So a bit of background, in 2021, the bipartisan infrastructure bill was passed in Congress, and this established the Safe Streets and Roads for All SS4A Grant Program. In February 2024, the Notice of Funding Opportunity was released for this fiscal year. In May, Calabasas submitted our application, and in September, we were, the awards were announced, and we learned that we were successful for the full amount requested. So between February and May, staff invested significant time and effort into the application. This included 16 workshop meetings with an outside source who was helping us learn what was needed for the application to submit a successful one. On top of that, staff met with traffic engineer consultant Tom Miracle to develop it and ensure that we were getting things that we needed as a community. And again, staff reviewed these, the needs of the community, and the application required three federal forms, data compiled from across four different agencies, and it was a three-page maximum narrative. So we only had three pages to explain to them why we needed $1.3 million. So, little bit of background on the grant, it is from the bipartisan infrastructure law. It is a discretionary program. The fund, funds initiatives to prevent roadway deaths and serious injuries. It funds initiative, sorry about that. And then, there are two options that the grant program has. You can do planning and demonstration, or you can do implementation. Staff went with planning and demonstration, because we don't currently have a plan that meets their criteria for doing implementation. Overall, in 2024, they awarded $1.07 billion to 453 recipients. It covers 70% of the nation's population, and 43% of the recipients have a population under 50,000, including Calabasas. So Calabasas was awarded $1,341,960, and we have an estimated $1.67 million project cost. And again, we went for planning and demonstration. So there's three components to this. The action plan is the most important. That's the plan that we need in order to do that implementation. So the action plan is a comprehensive plan towards Vision Zero, the idea that no roadway death or serious injury is acceptable in our country. It includes eight key components, leadership commitment and goal setting, the planning structure, safety analysis, engagement and collaboration, equity considerations, policy and process changes, strategy and project selections, progress and transparency. So it'll help identify existing safety problems and create projects and strategies to address those problems. And then, next, we'll talk about supplemental activities and demonstrations, but those will be utilized to inform the action plan. So supplemental activities include subplans. So we're gonna do an active transportation plan, roadway management plan, which we currently have in place as our pavement management system, which is in need of a refresh, a school safety plan, an updated one, an update to our local roadway safety plan, and speed management, so we can do those speed surveys that we were just talking about in the last item. We'll also be able to do some roadway safety audits with the community, website development to really get the, the community involved in, so that they understand what's happening, complete streets policy and design guide, and a lot of community engagement. This, this was really drilled into us in that workshop that we completed and by the grant itself. The community engagement is very important. And then finally, demonstration. So we will install a HAWK signal at Mulholland and Eddingham Avenue. So that's a crosswalk signal. So it's dark when there's no pedestrians, and it turns on when there's pedestrians. So Mulholland Highway will still be free-flowing, but when there's a pedestrian, it'll be much more strict option than we will have now with the Beacon. And then a temporary roundabout at Lost Virginus Road and Thousand Oaks Boulevard, temporary Class 4 bikeway on Lost Hills Road, a mini grant competition, so getting the community involved, getting students involved with crosswalk art that we would there, then install at their school. And then, open to the community would be a traffic safety poster series. And then this will also help put some more money into our intelligent transportation system efforts. And a little bit more on that temporary roundabout, because that is an item that has come back and forth to council. So this is gonna be at Lost Virginus Road at Thousand Oaks Boulevard. We, as soon as this grant agreement is signed, we will start doing a lot of public outreach to make sure that the community understands the different options available to them, what we want to do, why we want to do it. We are, we will be required by the We have, we will be required by the grant to do studies before, during, and after, and we will use temporary materials. We're not allowed to do any asphalt work, not allowed to do any concrete work. We have to keep it in a minimum of two weeks, but after that, if it isn't working out, we can take it out. But there's a lot of options currently out there where, if it works out, we can keep it in for 10 years without having to do any other work. So I think that this would be a really great option for the city, for this location. And then finally, after the award, the action plan will be utilized for further grant opportunities. If, if SS4A is still around, when we complete the action plan, we'll be able to go for that implementation funding and do all of the projects that we said that we could do. There's also the Highway Safety Improvement Program, which we've previously been successful at receiving funding from that. The National Highway Traffic Safety Administration has grants, and there's a lot more to come with all of the things that FTA is doing to try to go towards this Vision Zero. So staff is requesting that City Council authorize city manager to negotiate and execute the grant agreement with the U.S. Department of Transportation for the Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant Program, and to adopt resolution 2024-1934 to amend the budget.
Great work, Treya, but I'll come back to my comments. I'll start over here. David?
You took the words right out of my mouth. Tremendous, great report, great work, excellent, excellent, tremendous, really. If, if, so the 1.341, 960 is federal funds, and then we anticipate either matching the 325, 490 we're required to put in, and hopefully we'll get back along, at a later date from Prop M funds, right? Measure M funds.
We do currently have local return that we could use that wouldn't necessarily have to be immediately reimbursed, and then staff time is also eligible for, to be utilized as match.
Right, and I appreciate the report very clearly, and you spelt out what needs to be done, very detailed process, and what this can or can't be used for. So we, I will try to keep my comments on that, especially around the schools, school public safety. We already do some things, we have done some things with Safe Route to School Grants and, and local, and we do have things such as crossing guards. It has to be something on the roadway itself, right? Correct? To be used in this instance, it can't be personnel?
Correct, it would have to be something within the public right of way.
Okay, and the temporary roundabout that, that you showed, I know in the middle it looked like grass, what would the buffer be in, in that, in the outside of the roundabout, the temporary one?
So this is all actually plastic.
Okay.
Yeah, it's all plastic that's been nailed into the asphalt.
Okay. And would that example reduce the lane so that speed would slow down approaching the roundabout, or it would not change the design of the road on Lost Virginus?
The roadway would be partially redesigned to, in order to enter the roundabout appropriately. There are some old designs, but we are looking to redesign this as part of the project.
Okay, and then this temporary photo we're looking at here would also provide additional parking on the street that wasn't there before, correct?
I don't think.
This is just an example.
Okay.
This one isn't, yeah, this is, we pulled this from another city, just to.
It looks so good.
I thought you were kidding.
I'm joking. Thank you very much.
Apologies for the confusion.
It's a tremendous, tremendous job, well done, really well done. This is something to celebrate, that's, that's one of the great things. Thank you.
Councilwoman Shapiro, you also brought up issues around schools, just while Treya's correct, you know, the grant is limited to work, you know, in the city's public right of way, part of our engagement process can definitely, and will definitely involve the schools, so we'll be sharing this information with them, with the school district.
Great, thank you so much. Again, great job.
Ed?
Thank you. Good questions, David. You know, to me, 17, 18, and 19 kind of all tie in together, in a sense, they're a little different circulation element, but it really addresses one of the most important things, and we've, as a council, has always have top of mind of public safety. Public safety, whether it's through traffic management, circulation, or otherwise, and this really clearly gives us a basis to launch from, particularly like item number 18 as well, that plastic perimeter for the roundabout. You said that's nailed into the asphalt. Is it raised a couple inches up so people aren't going to run over it?
Correct.
And obey it?
So it's, again, this is just an example, there's a lot of different ways that this can be designed, installed, manufactured. The idea is that a normal sedan car, if it tried to drive over it, it wouldn't be happy about driving over it, they would notice the bump, they wouldn't want to do it again. But a larger truck that might not be able to navigate the roadway would easily be able to mount the curb to drive over it.
Would it then break?
No, these are very sturdy, some of these have been in place for 15 years now with regular truck traffic.
Very good, because that area, as we all know, there's a lot of traffic, but it's also controversial. Is it appropriate? Is it not appropriate? And it's a good experience to try it out, and if it doesn't work, there's nothing lost, nothing gained to speak about. So that's going to be an interesting area to follow. I'm certainly in favor of all of this. I love that we're reaching out for grants on so many areas, it's so important. We had never really been forceful on that, and it's paying off now. So thank you, great report.
Yeah, thank you for the report. I am really proud of our city for all the grants that we've been reaching out to, and this is especially a really big win, so congratulations to your whole department on that. Regarding the roundabout, I remember when we looked at the project before, one of the features was a split crosswalk that had a median where pedestrians had a protected area of refuge. In looking at the picture straight ahead of us, this is exactly what we didn't want, which is coming out of the roundabout, people aren't necessarily looking for pedestrians. So would we be able to bring this back closer to our other plan where the sidewalks or the crosswalks are separated from the roundabout unprotected?
Yes, so this is from North Carolina, this was just a very random, more to show the kind of material that would be used.
Appreciate it. I just want to make sure that we're, we're remembering the features that we were so focused on here as a council when this was before. The other question I had on this particular roundabout would be signage. If this is a temporary installation, I'm sure as soon as it goes up, the first thing we're going to hear from the community is, what's with the plastic roundabout, you know? So some signage that tells the community that this is a study of safety, that this is an opportunity for input, that this is not permanent, that this is to gauge the community and, and, and how well this is working, so that we can decide if we want to do it permanent. And I think that kind of signage is necessary for this, so consider that and where that might be placed. Regarding the temporary bike lane in Lost Hills Road, I think that's a great idea. I do know that the curbs for the sidewalks in Lost Hills Road extend out into the parking aisles at the intersections. So is dismantling those curbs considered part of our temporary work, or would the bicycle lanes would have to go around that, or how would we do that on a temporary basis?
So temporary, again, we can't touch asphalt or concrete, so those would remain, and what we would have to do is guide the bicyclists around the current improvement.
Okay, and is there any opportunity to do the permanent work on a separate ticket, and then come in after the fact and do the temporary?
We can do.
I think it's something to study, because a bike lane that has to navigate around those, I can predict the failure from this chair without even looking at it. So just something to consider. I'm, I'm excited that we're studying all of these, because these are all the little features that we as council have all identified over the years in our city as, as little stumbling blocks here and there, so I'm glad that we can. The last question I had was regarding staff time. I noticed in the report that staff time can be used to contribute towards our local funds. Can it also be an expense on the federal fund side?
Correct, we can use it as local match.
Okay, all right, that was my last question. Thank you.
Thank you. James?
I had a question about, you know, as I remember the decade-plus-long debate over this roundabout at Lost Virginus and Thousand Oaks, I thought part of it was over the design and, and just the fact of whether we wanted a roundabout there, and there was divided, you know, this will help, I think, tell us what the community thinks, but wasn't part of it like the cost of a permanent one? As I recall, every time it went out to bid, and it went out at least twice, if not three times, it came back at like close to $1 million. And my question, I guess, is, even if the public likes the idea of the roundabout, which it really never has quite gotten much, you know, majority support, how do we, how do we pay for a permanent one? I mean, I, I wonder if this is a, you know, if you put it out there and everyone loves it, and then, then we go out and we go out to bid, we're still running against that cost problem, aren't we?
So the idea behind this temporary one is it could last 20 years, and nobody would know that it's not permanent. It could potentially become the permanent solution, and if we decide we want to do, you know, the concrete, the asphalt, and all of that, we would apply for implementation funding.
And if the public doesn't like it, it just comes out?
Correct.
Okay. All right, that was it.
I just have a few quick questions. First, this is a fabulous presentation, and such great work has gone into this, so thank you. Well, we have this picture on this slide, it's just a picture. How will we decide if the community likes it?
That's, that is a really good question. It's not going to be a perfect science. We're going to have, I, we're most likely going to have some dissenters, even if, if we have the majority of the community likes it. So factored into this is also going to be the engineering analysis of what's, what's proves out to be best for safety of motorists and pedestrians. But we will be launching different surveys online, and we're going to be keeping counts, and we're also going to hold community meetings, and we're going to have, we already have developed some internal schematics that will be released soon for a roundabout, bulb outs, or signalizing the intersection, we'll ask people to vote on those, so we'll have some metrics. We can't guarantee that the same people are going to show up to every single event and can be, and participate in the survey, so there, there won't be any real scientific way to determine that, but I think by doing this, the outreach before, during, and after, we'll have enough data to understand if this is something that the majority of the community supports.
No, I think that's a good plan. I think this is great. I was curious as I was listening to you, are there other things like this, other temporary tools in the Public Works world that we might be able to utilize in the community?
There are. One thing that you might see a lot, especially in our neighboring cities, are the temporary roundabouts, where they'll stripe and put the bollards out to show like a curb bulb out, or not roundabouts, bulb outs, to reduce the crossing length at an intersection, and they're, they're performed or installed similar to this. That's one that comes to mind, so there's also been experiments in other cities with, you know, basically extending the sidewalk, taking away streetside parking with, you know, parklets, and that's something else that can be looked at, depending on the location.
Yeah, no, I found it really interesting, so thank you. And then my other two questions, quick, so when will, what's the timing, like especially for the, the Hawk device? The signal?
So, the plan is to do it by the second year, so this is kind of a three-year planned program, because we still need it to inform our action plan. We just, it's really pending the time that it takes for us to get through the grant agreement, get everything signed, bring on somebody to, you know, help manage the contract, do the design, do all of the things, so our estimate is no later than the end of 2026.
And then, I have a question. I think Tatiana, didn't we talk about this? Is this what we, you wanted to get at this intersection a while ago?
Yes.
This is really exciting, so, and is this, it's in Westlake or where?
Westlake.
Westlake, okay. This is going to make a huge difference at the, at that intersection, so I know Tatiana, Tatiana and I had talked about it a few years ago, so, seriously, this is all really exciting, so thank you very much. Are there any other comments? Okay, may I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Let's see, you want to restate it? Sure, just authorize, oh, I'll do it. Authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute the grant agreement with the U.S. Department of Transportation for the Safe Streets and Roads for All SS4A Grant Program, adopt resolution number 2024-1934, amending the budget. I have a motion.
Yes.
Yes, okay, motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Moving on to future agenda items? Are there any requests for future agenda items?
Mayor, we do have item 19.
Oh, yes, I am in a hurry, because I wrote my notes under that, sorry about that. Okay, back to 19. Adoption of resolution number 2024-1937, approving and setting updated fees for the citywide traffic mitigation fee district.
So, tonight, before you use a presentation on updating our traffic mitigation fee program, it hasn't been updated for a long time, and Tom is going to explain the details of how we got to the new fees. We also are joined by Sarah Brandenburg from Fair and Peers, who helped us basically conducted and completed the Nexus Study that supports all of this, and she's here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Curtis. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and council, as Curtis said, it, it has been a while since the traffic mitigation fee has been updated. Essentially, the fees were established in the early 2000s, and they were set at that time without an escalating factor, so they're back in, in dollars from that day. One of the things that we wanted to make sure we looked at was not only kind of what's going on with the new general plan that is sort of dictating to us what projects are important to the community, but also make sure that new development that happens that's adding traffic to our community is paying their fair share. So, the traffic mitigation fees pay for funding for transportation projects that are in our general plan. They pay their fees prior to the issuance of building permit, they do pay on a fair share cost basis. We are updating the fee now that the general plan has, has been updated, and we worked through the projects that were in that list, and the TTC worked with us to set the priorities of the projects that were in the, the general plan document, to help us sort of focus in on which ones are most important to build into the fee program. We did reduce the, the overall list of the projects that were in the general plan based upon projects that were going to be funded through other, other mechanisms and, and other grants, so that we could kind of really focus in on the ones that were not funded through that process. I'm not going to go through every project, but this is the list of projects we have, was it seven, general roadway and circulation projects, consisting of potentially using monies for this to help pay for a permanent roundabout at, at Lost Virginus and Thousand Oaks, signalized intersection at Mulholland and Eddingham, Lost Hills at Cold Springs, Mulholland at, at Freedom. This is a map showing those projects that are kind of the general circulation roadway And then we have four other areas that we are covering with this. One is upgrading the traffic signal system to be smarter. A lot of that hardware has gotten old, the traffic operations center across the hall is sort of outdated and, and no longer needed. And then also looking at bicycle, pedestrian, and school safety projects that are important for the community and help bring funding for those traffic safety issues that are impacted by the increase in traffic from new development. The total cost estimate from all these projects is $38 million. The fair share contribution based upon the added growth from the projects in the general plan, from the development potential of the general plan is about 4.2 million, and if you kind of work backwards, that calculates an average cost per new trip of $489. So the fee is based upon sort of this calculation of this new development is generating so many trips, their fair share of the total projects is this dollar amount, therefore it's a cost per trip, and that goes into looking then at the, the individual uses, whether it's single-family, retail, office, and industrial, and breaking that out. So there, there was a change in state law about seven, eight years ago, I think it was. So there, there was a change in state law about seven, eight years ago, I think it was, in that residential units used to be able to be charged on a, a single residential unit, paid a single fee regardless of the size of that unit. We do know, there's lots of data showing that larger residential homes generate more traffic than smaller homes. State law requires us to break it down by a reasonable size of unit, and they pay the fee per unit based upon the square footage. So this is for single-family and multifamily, these are the, the recommended fees. And then for non-residential, for lodging, retail, office, and light industrial, and, and medical office, these are all the types of non-residential projects we expect to come into, to the city. Just to kind of compare, the existing fees are $1,230 per single-family home, or sorry, per home, whether they're single-family or multifamily, $3 per square foot of retail, and $274 per square foot of office. The proposed fees are an average of $4,600 per single-family home, $2,200 for multifamily, $1,267 per square foot for retail, and $5.30 per square foot of office. One of the things that I did do, and I, and I forgot to put it into, into here, was I took the existing fees and I used the construction cost index from the time that those fees were established to, to 2024. They actually end up being about the same, so even if we had a multiplier, we'd sort of end up in the same spot we're at now, where we're recommending. So, I feel we're at a very reasonable place in terms of what we're charging new development to, to happen in the city. And one of the things that we're recommending and, and is built in to the, the resolution is that the fee be updated annually based upon the construction cost index, so that we can continue to make sure that we have the money available for the projects that we need built. So that was a very kind of quick overview, but we are here to answer a lot of questions, and we are recommending that Council consider and approve the transportation impact fee update, Nexus study, and adopt Resolution 2024-1937, approving and setting updated fees for the citywide traffic mitigation fee district. We're happy to have, happy to answer any questions, and that was very quick overview, but I know you've probably got a lot of questions, so.
Thank you. Ed, I'll start with you.
You're reading my mind. If we can go back to, I think, Slide 8, just want to be sure that the public and Ed Albrecht is accurate on this, so maybe Slide 9. So the existing fees and proposed fees, these are, what do we annualize our fees currently? Because I assume that this is based on new construction?
That's correct.
Or reused construction, remodeling?
No, it's only new construction.
Only new construction.
That's correct.
Okay. I think, I'm pretty well set on this. I might be a little, just the whole thing, the whole traffic mitigation, this whole plan, managing our traffic better, the particular signals that you pointed out, many of us have lived through those signals prior to them being corrected, and the difference is like night and day. So I'm looking forward to supporting this and implementing the study ASAP.
David?
Thank you for this report as well, very detailed. Quick question, the cost to do this work? I know the mitigation fees and everything will generate income so that we can take care of these issues, and our roads, and traffic signals, and intersections, but what was the cost for us to do this? And I don't know if that's the city manager, or, or to your office.
I, I don't know the exact fee for the consultant that was hired to do the work. It is funded by the fee program, so we have fees that are currently sitting in the bank for that fee program. I believe their contract, it's kind of part of the same contract. For those of you that don't remember, Fair and Peers, who prepared this, did also work on our general plan, so it was part of that same contract. I believe it was about 30-ish thousand dollars for this, this effort on, on their behalf.
Thank you. I am absolutely supportive of this. This is great work. It'll be a little expensive for some new homes, but that's compared to dollars many years ago versus dollars now, as, as you explained, are, are the same, or, or not that much of a difference. It'd be nice for all of us, as you mentioned, or somebody mentioned, Ed did, the traffic signals being more coordinated. I used to think Robert was here, or somebody was here making a joke, making me wait at a light with our signals, because you get through one and immediately stop at the next, and that would take a long time, and it would be a quick light. So, again, this is really important as far as making sure we have the proper funds going forward to make our city safer, so, thank you.
Peter?
Thank you for your report again. I did have a question on a couple of things. One, you had a slide up that showed a budget for our projects of 38 million with a 4.2 million calculated fair share. I didn't quite follow that. Where does?
I have some backup slides that'll help explain that. I think it's this one. So, let me show this slide. Why did I lose that? Sorry. Yeah. Okay, so, the fair share, and I'll probably have Sarah jump in to, to talk more about the, the details of this, if you want, but this shows in the, in the second column, the total estimate of cost for all of the improvement projects of 38 million roughly, and the development fair share contribution. So that was done using the traffic modeling to show the development was generating a certain amount of trips, and that was, that ratio of those new trips to the existing trips is, the fair share is their percentage of the total trips in, in the city. In this case, the last column shows the percentage of, of the project funded by new development, but roughly, it, it kind of calculates to, it's roughly 11% of the, of the, all the projects is being funded by those new trips and those projects.
That explains it. It brings up the question as well. I know our fees look like they're coming up about fourfold in this new survey. Any reason why it took us this long to update them?
That is a tough part.
I'm sorry to have to ask that question, but I mean, this is one of the questions we should be asking ourselves. How did we miss that?
I can answer that question a little bit. Traffic mitigation fee programs typically don't update until general plans are updated, because that sort of dictates what the new programs would be. And a lot of cities, at least historically, through the 80s, 90s, and early 2000s, it was a very controversial issue when you were gonna raise your, your mitigation fees. And it's just, it's a, it's kind of an effort that you need to make sure you have all your ducks in a row, to make sure you're doing the right things. You know, one, one of the things that all the new programs that I've been involved in, I'm sure Sarah's been involved in over the last five to 10 years, is building in these escalators. And even in some cities, you can go in and update your project list and update your fee program as a kind of an intermediate, and, and that's what I hope we would do if we decide that there's important projects we want to add, we can update it. There is a cost involved for updating it, as we, we mentioned earlier. One of the things that I, that I didn't mention earlier, and I wanted to, to make sure it's clear, is that any development project that's already been approved by either planning commission or council pays the old fees, because that's what they were approved under. So it would be any, any development project that's approved after this resolution goes into place would pay the new fee.
In the resolution, I saw, item number six of Section 2 says, "The proposed updated citywide fee calculated in the report may require annual adjustment upon evaluation of building and construction costs." So that tells me that we're not gonna have an automatic escalation clause, but an opportunity to review annually, is that correct?
Yes. What we would do from here on out, Council looks at and updates their fees across the board every year. We would then include this potential update in that, every year where we would look at, what is the cost index, what is that update, does that make sense? And then Council would ultimately make the decision about whether that fee goes up or not.
Okay, but that still requires human intervention. Is there any logic in tying this to the consumer, the construction cost index and saying it automatically escalates unless modified by Council?
I guess the only question I would have in response to that would be, if the consumer price index goes down, would we then automatically drop our fees? And, and I, so I, I think it's something we need to think about, because it being the California index, which is the one that's typically used, we may have local costs and things that are different from what's happening on a statewide basis. So, I think it makes sense for human intervention and, and ultimately Council decision-making.
Okay. And just to be clear, we would base this on the California Construction Cost Index, not the Consumer Cost Index.
That's correct.
Okay. The last question I had, I think, is, we mentioned that when we're redeveloping, we don't get a second shot at the fees here, because presumably the developer has already paid it when they first built the parcel out. But if they're converting from office to retail, the fee structure is twice as much for retail as it is for office, can we not charge the difference if they change the zoning or the use?
So, I'm gonna have Sarah answer this question, because I know from agencies that I've worked for and worked with in the past, it's been a policy decision to not charge, if you're keeping the building the same size, you don't charge any increase, or any change of use. You do charge if they have a 10,000 square foot building and they add 1,000 square foot mezzanine, then you do charge them for additional square footage. You don't charge residential for adding, you would add them for a second unit onsite, but not in, like, an ADU or, or those types of things. So, but maybe Sarah can answer the question about whether we can or not.
Yeah, we absolutely can. If a use comes in that's more intense, and we do, you can see how the fee varies based on land use type, right? It's directly linked to the trip generation activity of that use, so yes, retail would generate more trips, and that's a policy decision that you could charge the additional fee.
And a lot of times, what we would do is require the developer, whoever's converting the use, to provide an initial traffic study and justify whether or not the fees could be increased and what those would be in addition to what we have here. So there may be additional ad hoc issues that could be involved in addition to the fees that they may have to pay.
Okay. And, and thank you for the clarification, but the clarification does bring up another question. The, Section 2 also had, "All types of new development in the city will cause a burden on the city's circulation system and negatively impact efficiency and safety. All types of new development within the city will directly benefit." It keeps referring to that. So you mentioned, if we add 1,000 square foot to a commercial facility, we would charge for the 1,000 square feet. But if we increased a residence in the differences between these categories that we've just laid out, if they built from the, you know, 3,000 square foot mark to the 5,000 square foot mark and jumped up to the next number, we wouldn't necessarily charge them? Would we need to spell that out in this resolution?
That is, Councilmember, that, that's a great question. It is not spelled out specifically. Honestly, that's my fault. When I wrote the resolution, it's based upon my experience in other cities that have not been, have not gone that way to be restrictive and have been more open-ended. But, again, staff does not have a problem at all if we want to build that into the resolution to clarify that we want it to apply for, and a change in use, and a change in the size for both residential and the non-residential categories.
And I don't know how my fellow Councilmembers feel. I would say that a change in use, I would think, if it's a more impactful use, we would be looking for an additional fee on the commercial side. Residential, I would probably just leave it alone. That's my preference. These are just gray areas that I see as we present this report, and sorry to make the discussion longer than necessary.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and Council, I do have a follow-up question with that. If somebody goes from a higher intense use to a lower intense use?
No reason.
We need to make sure that it's clear in the resolution that we don't give money back.
No, I was thinking.
Agreed, no credits.
No reasons.
I, I would be supportive of any change where the use becomes more intense. I think, I don't have any, I don't have any issue with that.
So when it comes back, it can be added.
Did you have any?
So what we can do is, you can direct the staff to include that. If there's a consensus, we can vote on that as a, a motion to amend the existing draft resolution to, to include additional fees for changes in use on the non-residential side. And then we can vote on the resolution in general, we can bring back the, the language that you want, but I think we can do that administratively without needing to bring it back, because it's very clear what you want.
I would support that as well, unless there's any basis not to, I guess, other than what you've indicated.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and members of the Council, I think what we would do is modify Section 4 to make the language clear. Right now, it just says new construction, building permits. So we would modify that language to include changes in use, which would not necessarily be tied to building use, building permits at all. It may, but it may not. So, changes in use is approved by the, the city, and then also to building permits for any intensification of size or use.
And the change you indicated earlier, that we would not be providing funds back in a
That's correct.
Reduction of size.
Does anyone else have any? James?
I don't have any questions.
Okay, I didn't think so. And I just, I don't really have any questions. Can you just go back to the chart that had the intersections that we would be upgrading? It was the map.
This would be the list of circulation roadway projects.
Yeah, the list. That's fine. So, there's no timeframe for any of this? This is just basically our wish list?
Yeah, so, the, as the fee program accumulates funds through the development, the CIP program would then identify projects that could be funded through that. And that's, again, that's Council decision about what those priorities are. We'll probably work annually with the commission to come up with, you know, once we identify that there's funding to do a project, we'll work with the commission to kind of identify what's their recommendation for the next project, and then that'll go through the CIP process coming to Council.
And just to be clear, at this point, there's no money to do, to start any of these?
There is, some funds existing in the traffic mitigation fee program, about a million dollars. So, for instance, if the roundabout project were to be supported by the community, we could use that million dollars in, that's in the fund right now to build that project.
And just a question, like, how much would, like, I assume the numbers here correspond to the order that we would do them in? Is that, or no?
These are not, these are not prioritized, other than this was the, the, working with the commission, they kind of developed some priority, but it's not necessarily the priority that we would build them. It would be something we could look at annually.
Just because we talked previously about the Mulholland Highway in Eddingham, because of safety and all the students crossing, like, how much would something like that cost?
So, a signalized intersection at Mulholland and Eddingham would probably be about $600,000. At Freedom, because it's a full intersection, would probably be about $800,000. The Lost Hills Cold Springs would be kind of similar, depending on what the ultimate configuration of that, and if that's what we actually wanted to do there. We're not, we're not restricted to actually do a signal when we go to that project, we could do something else that achieves the same result.
And just because
Yeah.
We have some money, and the assumption is we're gonna be getting more, I would love to start us looking at ways to make these things happen, because I think Ed or someone said it, when these changes happen, they're, I don't even know how to properly say it, but like, they're very well-received in most cases. Like, when there was a light added at Park Granada, and what was it, Park Sienna, one of them? I mean, it's like, people are so appreciative, you know, these things really like, help on the day-to-day commuting through the city and making our roads safer, so, it's just, if we have a list and we do have some money, I would like to start looking into these things.
Yeah, that's definitely something we can do. I would say that having a million dollars roughly is, it'd be nice to have more, and, and this also ties into the action plan that we're gonna be developing, not
Not that we want to wait longer for safety improvements, but that plan is going to reveal a lot of information that will allow us, I think, to prioritize these with some technical backing. But if council has any input on a priority, you know, feel free to reach out to Public Works at any point on this list, and we're happy to bring it back and prioritize these.
This is a good list. So are there any other questions or comments? Okay, Ed?
I may have said this before, but this list is fantastic. This is a list of someone who's lived here for a long time and really knows, you know, where the trouble spots are. And I think when I look at Mulholland, Eddingham, and we're talking about Freedom, that there is a light there, that might even have an effect of slowing traffic down a little bit. Just the fact that there's a light and it could change signal. Freedom would get a lot of traffic. I know the people on that street, and they've all been complaining about having to drive up to Paul Revere to make the left-hand turn. Also, the idea of the Hawk, you added one of the other, I think it was an eighteen, I don't know why that's loud, but that could be at Freedom as well. So it's a potential consideration there. But these are elements that we deal with every single day, and yeah, I think people would really appreciate it in a lot of ways, and safety-wise as well.
And Ed is right. Some of these would slow down the speeding significantly to help achieve the visions, vision zero, so. Any other comments?
I just had a random observation. I was just thinking, you know, when I was sixteen and first started driving, I do not believe there was a single traffic signal in the entire city, just to let you know how old I am. And I mean that, I do not recall a single one.
Is there a motion to approve the transportation impact fee update, next study, and adopt Resolution Number 2024-1937 approving and setting updated fees for the citywide traffic mitigation fee district?
As amended to include...
As amended to include all existing, all new improvements as well as existing improvements that intensify their use, including expansion of the same use in non-residential developments.
Including additions and zone changes.
Shall be required to pay these district fees.
Okay.
I'll accept that.
Sorry, I have a, I have a comment on that. I think it was for residential and non-residential use. So if somebody, if somebody doubled the size of their house, then they would pay the incremental increase.
ADUs.
That's what I believe was suggested, but I could be wrong.
And I think I discussed it both ways.
Right. And all existing developments or all, you know, all developments that decrease their intensity and use shall not be entitled to a refund or credit with respect to these district fees.
Correct.
That's correct, but let's discuss this real quickly before we vote on it, because if somebody adds 100 square foot to their house and gets into the next tier and has to pay the full ticket, we're going to be getting a lot of feedback. That's a little different than somebody doubling the size of their house, so I would almost be inclined to say commercial but not residential.
I was going to go with you, because you assume that if someone's adding on to their house, they're not adding more people, I mean, most of the time, so I would...
ADUs.
Yeah, we'll charge them for ADUs.
I was just thinking, stick with commercial.
So I'd like to amend the motion. Is this my motion or somebody else's?
You can have it.
I can have it, all right. It's been granted to me. I'd like to amend the motion to be commercial and not residential.
Oh, correct. So all new developments as well as non-residential or existing non-residential developments.
Correct.
Is there a second?
I'll second if no one has.
Great. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks to Public Works for a full night. Yes. And now we will move on to future agenda items. Does anyone have any requests? Nope. Okay. Direction from council, no new requests.
I would just ask that in future agendas, if I could ask our city clerk, we used to have the future agenda items included on the last page of our packets, and it doesn't seem to be on this one, so if we could just keep that up there so we can keep track of what's added. It's not on mine.
Something's there.
In the back?
But it's not, it's not on the same.
My bad.
Are there any task force reports? I'll start with James.
I do not. Next time I will.
Peter?
Just a quick mention that I did attend the Santa Monica Mountains Trail Council Dinner on October 24th. This is an entirely volunteer organization that maintains all of the trails in the Santa Monica Mountains, and they're affiliated with many of the organizations that we work with, including the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy, and was able to enjoy an evening with the volunteers as they received all sorts of awards for the number of hours that they put in to maintain our trails, and I think we should all be appreciative of the work that they've done.
That's very nice. Very appreciative. Ed?
Yes, I have two. One, I can't leave a council meeting without talking about Clean Power Alliance, which now, everybody would like to know, has fifteen percent of the Southern Cal Edison customers, a pretty substantial amount. And also, they're moving to expand their battery capacity, and rates have stabilized for this year going forward. Some residents might even see some credits. So we're trying to understand the odd PUC roller coaster rate settling. It's, I won't even get into it, but hopefully rates will be just where they are for another year. And on Monday, I will be attending the Valley Economic Alliance event, welcoming LAPD Chief Jim McDonald representing our city. That's my reports.
David?
Thank you. We had a brief budget meeting with Ron and Kindon and Peter and myself briefly since our last meeting. Also, I attended a number of SCAG meetings last, two weeks ago, and the main discussion was about the Olympics again. The mayor actually came to that meeting and discussed communities' again involvement. So if we have interest in that, that's starting right away. All council, I think we all showed up for the Chamber Kebab Village ribbon cutting and tremendous event. It was really nice. I attended Valley Economic Alliance Board Meeting and the outgoing celebration for LA City Council Chair Paul Kokorian at the Valley, and Chief, new LAPD Chief Jim McDonald was there as well, so he's very familiar with our city and will be a very great addition. That's it, thank you.
I realize what we neglected to acknowledge was the great work by Mike Dyer, Kindon, Scott, Michael McConville, and everyone during the fires last week. It seems like it was forever ago, but it was just a few days ago. I think our staff has just done an exceptional job, the way the EOC was opened, the communication out to the residents, using our text messages and emails. I know everyone felt very in the loop, and I think also the work that Chief Smith did, just working with the Topanga community. I mean, I find it fascinating that they knew a fire was going to happen and that it was going to be catastrophic, and I feel so bad for what happened to Camrio and the communities out there, but our area was very prepared for something, even though it's not in the city, how Topanga Elementary School was relocated to Woodland Hills and everything they did. But the work that our city staff did was really exceptional, and I just feel like we're in such good hands if, God forbid, there ever is an emergency. It's really night and day from where we were a few years ago. So thank you again to you, Michael, Scott, and Mike Dyer, and all the rest of the staff that I know lent a hand. Those, my, no, I can't even remember where I was, but I know I had a bunch of meetings, so that's it for me. Kindon, do you have anything to add?
I do, Mayor. Thank you for acknowledging the EOC team during the PSPS event. It was, it was a great feeling when we got together as a team, and as we started the conversation, everybody had already known what they needed to do, and so they came and reported and were following up. It was a good synergy in that room. I just also want you to know that a number of us on the team reached out to our colleagues in Camrio and in Moore Park. Our hearts go out to all of that region with the mountain fire, but we did reach out to our colleagues and asked if they needed help with personnel or resources, whatever that is. We're very much aware that a fire in the region affects all of us, and so as, as we think about that, it's a good opportunity for training, but it also is a good way to lend a hand when we can. Just a couple other items, it was on our consent calendar, but I do want to compliment our community development team on the tobacco retailing enforcement grant, about $45,000 there on that, they've been very proactive on that. A couple of other things, I was able to meet with the Senior Center Steering Committee just last week. Always feel welcome with that group, it's good to be with them, and very insightful on some of their input and ideas that they have. Our Assistant City Manager Scott Trujillo and our Public Works Director Curtis Castle met with CPHA last week as well, this week? This week, thank you. And looked at speeding and some other issues, and so that was a good productive conversation. And then finally, we want to do a formal welcome to our new city attorney Pamela Lee. We spent two days as staff, one full day and then a second half day, just in orientation with her, getting her and her team up to speed on some of the issues that we're dealing with, and coordinating with each of the departments, and an opportunity to meet with Pam and John, and so we're glad to have them on the team.
Welcome, Pam. And with that, we will adjourn to a special meeting scheduled for Wednesday, December 4th, and then the city council will reorganize on December 11th, where we will appoint our new mayor, and we are adjourned.